Good evening, welcome, ladies and gentlemen. This is the first meeting of the 2021-2022 Board of Education session. I would like to call the meeting to order. We'd like to start our meeting by reciting the pledge of
The United States of America and to your Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to take a moment to make a statement. I want to apologize for my recent actions. I understand that this may be perceived differently, but I acted out of emotion as a mother. This in no way reflects my level of commitment to the Board of Education or to this community. I want to say how sincerely sorry I am to Coach Landra, my fellow board members, and our community. I realize that I made an error in judgment. I own this as mine and sincerely apologize. Do we have a temporary chair person to move forward?
Just for tonight?
For just the first page until we elect. All right.
At this point, I call for nomination for President of Board of Education.
I'd like to nominate John Nash.
Nomination for John Nash, any second?
Second.
Second by Karen Fontana, all in favor?
Aye.
Any other nominations? I don't think we're very good.
There's not a line off the door?
No.
Take it away, would you like to change chairs? Thank you, Mr. Haggerty, for an excellent here. What's the name of the name, Mr. Nash?
My
Get it well.
Okay, well, thank you, everybody, for your nomination and your board of confidence in me. And I want to thank Paul for his leadership this past year, it's been a tough year, but he's served us well, thank you. Welcome. At this point, I just want to welcome our new members. Lena Cardwell Reddick and Anne McGurrow.
McGurrow.
And Craig Booth. Okay, so, just so we all know, my only agenda I have going forward is to make this district and this and our students excellent. That's our main goal. With that, we will call for your election of a Vice President. I have any nominations?
I have any time Davis for Vice President.
The nomination, we accept.
Second.
Diana. Are there any other nominations? Any non-pervable, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Name.
Seven, one. Okay, now we are calling for nomination for a clerk.
How did we want to handle this this year? I thought we had talked about doing this a bit. Well, there's a clerk and assistant clerk here. And I thought that we wanted to
You have to have a clerk, and we're nowhere near meeting that position yet, so that's why I saw the agenda for right now. At which point the board moves forward with a appointed, I'm sorry, a clerk position. At that point, then whoever is not on the list can just resign from those duties and that other person will take over, but we have to have some
And then we have talked about that we can differentiate later between a board clerk and a district clerk. Okay, thank you for the clarification.
So we will put the, that policy
Yes, okay.
Very best, yeah, okay, so
We have the policy, we need the personnel piece of it.
Okay, correct, so we're working on that. We have a nomination for clerk.
Professor Neil Baker, I know, sitting next to me, so I
Do you see her doing that? I suck at that.
Are there any other nominations? It'd be none, all in favor of Karen Fontana as the Board Clerk.
Aye.
I'm sure you didn't even kick your real table toe.
Push myself, bro.
Resolution for appointment of assistant clerk. Resolve that in the absence of legislative clerk, Executive Secretary to the Superintendent of Schools be appointed to serve as a assistant clerk and move the resolution.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Won't be carried. Item 11, resolution to appoint a voting delegate to 2021 New York State School Board Association Annual Meeting. Resolve that, to be determined, be appointed voting delegate to 2021 New York State School Board Association Annual Meeting.
It's usually whoever plans on attending the meeting and has a working hour with what this puts
I actually like to do that, I did, I was, it was me last year, but things were very strange with COVID, so if no one else wants that, I enjoy that level of engagement. Were you both these?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's Long Island issue too?
It's Manhattan.
Manhattan, no wait, so I'm not a citizen person.
We'll put you on a train and we'll go.
All in favor of Tanya being voted, voted voting delegate.
Aye.
All Now, we have to do also good resolution, it's kind of amended with Tanya's name in there.
No. And then there's usually an alternate for that too. I'm gonna tell you. That's I need to get it out of my mouth, no, I really
item 12, resolution to appoint first alternate delegate, going to see what, who it was, what it's
Maybe.
That would be somebody that plans on attending the conference.
It's not me.
I have.
Thank you.
So, we're resolved that Elena Cardwell Reddick be appointed first alternate delegate in the absence of voting ma, of the voting number to 2021 New York State School Board Association Annual Meeting. So move the resolution. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
13. Resolution to appoint a representative to Madison, Hurkmur County School Boards Institute. And was it Lisa last year?
I'll do it again.
Straight, we didn't
I'm gonna put Lisa's name in there. Resolve that Lisa Herbo will be appointed to represent the Rome City School District on the Executive Committee of the United Madison, Hurkmur County School Boards Institute for 2021-2022 school year end date.
Do you have that one? No.
Was it you?
I think I was the alternate. Anyone else?
We'll make, we'll make Amy the alternate.
She
Oh, sure.
Okay.
Do that, okay.
Anna McGurrow be appointed alternate representative Rome City Schools. I so moved the Sorry. Any discussion?
A second, I'm sorry. Joe.
Sorry. I use my own.
All in favor?
Aye.
14, resolution to authorize Board of Education members' participation in various meetings. Resolve that the Board of Education authorizes attendance at county, state, and national school boards association meetings, now there's such conferences, as approved by the President of the Board of Education. I so move the
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Haggerty, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
15, resolution to appoint Rome City School District Treasurer. Resolve that Judy Headay be appointed as Rome City School District Treasurer effective July 1, 2021, June 30, 2022. So move the resolution. Right, so remember Mr. Malatch? Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No. One no.
One no. 16, resolution to appoint Rome City School District Deputy, District Deputy Treasurer. Resolve that Christine Sullivan be appointed the Rome City School District Deputy Treasurer interim at a rate of pay commensurate with the marketing, the bargaining unit, overtime provision effective July 1, 2021. I move the resolution.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Haggerty, any discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? 17, resolution to appoint Central Treasurer for extracurricular activities accounts. Resolve that the School District Treasurer be appointed the Central Treasurer for extracurricular activities accounts for Rome City School District for 2021-2022 school year. So move the resolution.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Herboy. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
One.
One, one opposed. 18, resolution to appoint school purchasing agents. Resolve that the Director of Business and Finance be appointed school purchasing agent for the Rome City School District 2021-2022 school year. So move the resolution.
Second.
And by Mr. Haggerty, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Won't be carried. 19, resolution to appoint Records Management Officer. Resolve that the Director of Business and Finance be appointed Records Management Officer for the Rome City School District for 2021-2022 school year. So move the resolution. Seconded by Mr. Malatch, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Won't be carried. 20, resolution to appoint Data Protection Officer. Resolve that the Director of Information and Technology be appointed Data Protection Officer for Rome City School District 2021-2022 school year. So move.
A second, just one question here.
Miss Davis and
I did not get to, is this consistent with the updated policy that we, okay, I think I, I knew we had put a pin in updating this agenda for it, thank you.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Won't be carried. 21, resolution to appoint Student Residency Determination Officer. Resolve that upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Director of Business and Finance, or his designee, is hereby designated as a person to make determinations of student residency and entitlement to attend the schools of the district. Pursuant to section 100 dash 3Y of the Regulations of the Commissioner of Education. I so move the resolution.
Second.
Seconded by Miss Davis. Miss
I'm sorry, no, I thought we were done, that was my
No, I was just wondering, is this No, we do it every Who is this student residence student, because it's such a big issue, or at least it has been historically. It's not for residency within the district, for school zones, it's residency for between districts. So there's a discrepancy whether or not somebody lives in Camden or So we don't have Somebody in the old back and outdoors picture. Uh, we do. We have, it's not this person, it could be, generally if it gets to that level, we contract out with a private investigator to do that work.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
What was, what I was gonna say, usually when you take the page, you all take a turn, so one person
Oh, okay.
By Callie's consult.
I just looked to see if there's any
Yeah, because this is a long one, yeah.
You want to take a page, sir, go.
I'll let me, I'll take a page.
Okay.
22, resolution to appoint asbestos does not mean, resolve that upon recommendation, Superintendent Schools Director of Facilities, be designated as asbestos does not mean, the Rome City School District 2021-2022 school year.
Second. Move by, seconded by Mr. Herboy, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Won't be carried. 23.
23, resolution to approve District Compliance Officers for the 2021-2022 school year, resolve that upon the recommendation, Superintendent Schools, the personnel and following positions be appointed as compliance officer, owns the school districts, sexual harassment, and discrimination programs. For the 2021-2022 school year, Director of Counseling Services, Director of People Operations, I move the resolution.
Second.
Move to Mr. Malatch, seconded by Mr. Herboy, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Won't be carried.
24, resolution to appoint 504 Compliance Officer, resolve that upon recommendation, Superintendent Schools, the Director of People Operations, or his designee, is hereby appointed 504 Compliance Officer for the 2021-2022 school year.
Aye.
Move by Mr. Malatch, seconded by Miss McGurrow, any discussion?
I would just like to point out that I still feel strongly that this office should be more, or this position should be more strongly connected with the support, support
I agree with that.
That, that's making my, just want to make the point.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No. No, lots of
Two, two no, okay. Won't be carried, 62.
45, resolution designating a representative and an alternative representative of the Madison O'Nida, Kirkmore Schools Health Care Consortium. Whereas the Rome City School District is a permanent state member of the Madison O'Nida, Kirkmore Health Care Consortium henceforth consortium. And whereas the municipal cooperation agreement governing relationships between state members and consortium permits each member the opportunity to designate a consortium representative and a consortium alternate representative. And one, the Board of Education does hereby designate a bridal record business finance as the district's consortium representative for fiscal year beginning July 1, 2021, and ending June 30, 2022. Two, the Board of Education does hereby designate Peter S. Blake, Superintendent Schools, as the district's consortium alternate representative for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2021, and ending June 30, 2022. In the event of a consortium meeting, it's not attended by a district representative, but is attended by one of the district's alternate representatives, district's alternate representatives shall have authority for consortium meeting. Three, the Board of Education does hereby direct the Department of Education, providing the consortium of the happiest sports which verify its written applications.
Second. Move by, seconded by Mr. Haggerty, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Won't be carried. We got to take over the page?
I will, I'm next in line. Resolution 26, resolution to appoint the Assistant Superintendent for Operations and Management as Internal Claims Auditor. Resolve that the Assistant Superintendent for Operations and Management be appointed as the Internal Claims Auditor solely auditing of the Board Appointed Internal Claims Auditors' invoices and payments, I move the resolution.
Second.
Any discussion? Yeah, right?
This is Fontana, seconded by Mr. Herboy, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Won't be carried.
Right into the table, Kevin. Resolution to appoint grant writers, resolve that the following individuals are appointed for the 2021-2022 school year for the purposes of writing the following grants, is listed below, name, grant, effective date, and salary, I move the resolution.
Second.
Movement, Mrs. Fontana, seconded by Mr. Haggerty, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Won't be carried.
That went well, thank you. 28, resolution to appoint Fiscal Advisor, resolve that the Board of Education appoint Fiscal Advisor Incorporated as the Fiscal Advisor for the Rome City School District for the 2021-2022 school year, I move the Motion.
Second.
Move by Mr. Fontana, seconded by Mr. Herboy, any discussion?
How long is fiscal
I came in 99 and they were here in 99. Yeah, very small amount. We have, we have put that out.
Well, I guess I wonder that about several of the next following items. I don't know how frequently, is it a year, is it two years, is it three years, is it at the Board's discretion?
It's always at the Board's discretion, but we usually go three to five years with banking and such. External auditor, I think it's five, you can do up to five. By law, you can't do more than five, but the Board can always As long as you don't have a contractor already approved somebody for three years, and after two, you couldn't go out.
I feel like that's a chart we need to create as a board.
I'm already, no.
I'll make a list of everyone.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Won't be carried.
29, resolution to renew services, Archangel Company to perform the required annual audits. Resolve that upon the recommendation, this ten schools, the Rome City Schools, renew as the contract for Archangel Company to complete the annual audit for the school year ended June 30, 2021, and authorize the President of the Board of Education to sign such agreement, I move the resolution.
Sorry. Move by Dr. Fontana, seconded by Mr. Malatch, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Won't be carried.
30, resolution to put the law on trust yet in my, my right to serve as Board Counsel, I'm gonna say it again, resolve that the Roman trust gets my right to be appointed Board Counsel for the Rome City Schools for the 2021-2022 school year, I move the resolution.
And it's, it's bound company.
Bound company. The one I'm saying
Board, and Board.
Yes, I take my glasses on the I think you picked the wrong page.
Dr. Fontana, seconded by Mr. Haggerty, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Won't be carried.
31, resolution to appoint Architectural Thrum and Wabella Associates to serve as the District Architect of Records. Resolve that the Thrum and Wabella Associates be appointed the Architect of Records for the 2021-2022 school year, I move the resolution.
Second.
Move by Dr. Fontana, seconded by Miss Davis, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Won't be carried.
32, resolution to appoint the law firm, your end of PC to serve as legal counsel record, resolve that the law firm, your end of PC, give the legal counsel record for the 2021-2022 school year. I move the resolution.
Second.
Move by Dr. Fontana, seconded by Mr. Herboy, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Won't be carried. Who wants to take the next page? Okay.
Let's do it up. It's your first time
Number 33, resolution to authorize the Superintendent to utilize services of a local attorney. Whereas the district may have a number of local issues that require the services of legal counsel, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby authorizes the Superintendent to utilize on a needs basis the services of a local attorney for the 2021-2022 school year.
I move the resolution.
Yes.
Okay, so what you said?
Second.
Motion was moved by Ms. Reddick and seconded by Mr. Herboy. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Won't be carried.
Number 34, for a resolution to appoint school physician, resolve that upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, Word of Fit Medical LLC, is hereby appointed school physicians for the 2021-2022 school year. I move the resolution.
Second. Move by Ms. Reddick, seconded by Mr. Malatch. All in favor?
Is this the same?
Yes. This is the, this will be the third year.
I feel like this calls something different. Apologies, thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Won't be carried.
Number 35, resolution to appoint M Care Ambulance Service Incorporated to provide medical coverage at athletic competitions. Resolve that M Care Ambulance Service Incorporated of Rome is hereby appointed to provide medical coverage at athletic competitions for the Rome City School District for the 2021-2022 school year. I move the resolution.
Second. Ms. Reddick, seconded by Mr. Haggerty, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Won't be carried.
Number 36, resolution for student accident insurance, resolve that the Board authorizes the district to enter into a contract for the provision of accident insurance coverage for all students in grades pre-K through 12, as administered by Gerber, for the 2021-2022 school year. I move the resolution.
Second.
Move by Ms. Reddick, seconded by Ms. Herboy, all in favor?
Aye.
Number 37, resolution to appoint Internal Claims Auditor. Resolve that Grossman St. Armour CPAs, PLLC, be appointed as Internal Claims Auditor for the Rome City School District for the 2021-2022 school year. I move the resolution.
Sorry. Move by Ms. Reddick, seconded by Mr. Malatch. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Won't be carried.
Number 38, resolution to renew cafeteria services to Rome Catholic School, United cerebral palsy, and Rome Family YMCA. Resolve that the Board of Education authorizes the Superintendent of Schools to sign a contract renewing cafeteria services to Rome Catholic School, United cerebral palsy, and Rome Family YMCA for the 2021-2022 school year. I move the resolution.
Second.
Move by Ms. Reddick, seconded by Mrs. Herboy. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Won't be carried.
And 39, resolution to authorize the City of Rome to do the tax collection for the 2021-2022 school year. Resolve that the Board of Education authorizes the City of Rome to collect school taxes for the 2021-2022 school year. I move the resolution.
Second.
Reddick, seconded by Miss Davis, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Won't be carried.
Number 40, resolution to accept the intermunicipal agreement between the Rome City School District and the Madison O'Nida Bocce's for Attorney Services. Resolve that upon the recommendation of the Superintendent, Superintendent of Schools, the intermunicipal agreement for attorney services between the Rome City School District and the Madison O'Nida Bocce's for the 2021-2022 school year be accepted by the Board of Education. I move the resolution.
Second. Ms. Reddick, seconded by Mr. Malatch, discussion, can you just refresh my memory? The, we got our Board Counsel, we have the Time Counsel, what sorts of
Bocce's attorneys will do work representing the Ballin family court, usually a case, petitions, something of that nature, just kind of require a simple statement or a quick visit to the court house.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Won't be carried. Okay.
Do you want to start here, or you want to start you? Resolution for settlement claims that resolve that the Superintendent of Schools upon the recommendation of the Director of Business and Finance and the school attorneys hereby authorized to compromise title and be minor claims against the district in an amount not to exceed $1,000 for claim settled, and all claims settlements greater than $1,000 must have board approval.
I move the resolution.
Motion to
You say I move the resolution.
I move the resolution. I move the resolution.
Move, move by Ms. McGurrow, seconded by Mr. Malatch, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Won't be carried.
42, resolution to authorize Superintendent's certified payrolls, resolve that the Superintendent or his designee be authorized as certified payrolls for the 2021-2022 school year.
Move
I move the resolution, I'm sorry. Waiting for y'all.
Second. McGurrow, seconded by Mr. Haggerty, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Won't be carried.
Resolution to approve mileage reimbursement rate, resolve that the reimbursement equal to IRS rate per mile plus tolls and overnight parking charges for out-of-district travel on official school birth business be improved. It is further recommended that all employees be eligible for reimbursement at the IRS rate unless otherwise modified by contractual agreement for all in-district mileage while in performance of their official duties. Motion to, I What?
I move the
I move the resolution. Forget this.
Well, you're right under fire there. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Haggerty, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Won't be carried.
44, resolution to authorize expenses, expenses for out-of-district travel, resolve that the Superintendent or his designee is hereby empowered to authorize all expenditures, including those for out-of-state, just out-of-district travel for attendance at conferences and meetings for which funds have been approved within the budget. I move the resolution. Second.
Move by Ms. McGurrow, seconded by Mr. Herboy, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Won't be carried.
45, resolution, design, designated bank as an official depository, whereas Community Bank NA will be designated to be official depository for Rome City School District, now therefore and be resolved that the following financial institutions also be designated as official depositories for Rome City School District, Berkshire, Berkshire, Chase, Manhattan, National Banking Trust, Adarondic Bank, MMT Bank, Rome Teachers Federal Credit Union, New York State Liquid Asset Fund. I move the resolution. I move the resolution.
Move by Miss McGurl, seconded by Mrs. Bowie. Any discussion? All favor.
Forty-six, the resolution for authorization of intra trust transfers. Resolve that in accordance with the policy number four two oh one, the director of business and finance be authorized to make intra fund transfers not to exceed ten thousand dollars for twenty twenty one through twenty twenty two school year. Resolution to establish, oh, sorry. Sorry, I moved the resolution.
Second. Move by Miss McGurl, seconded by Mr. Hagerty, any discussion?
Does this policy match up with? Okay, so we can see how it's already fishing books, okay. But yeah, just fine, I didn't know if they've been discussed during the year.
I don't think we've gotten to the finance segment yet, that's the next one.
Any further discussion?
How many times can they make? Is there a cap on the number of times? Well, the goal is to ensure that there aren't, there isn't an excessive amount transferred without knowledge. So if you did nine thousand five hundred dollars ten times.
There's well more than ten transfers. Aren't those the, the transfer we approved? Correct, anything over ten thousand dollars.
Okay.
And there is a report that, and I've been saying it since I was trying to review, you can get a report that's printed like that with every transfer for twenty seven dollars up to twenty, now twenty seven, anytime finance if you wanted to start adding that, just to look at it.
Any further discussion? All favor.
Forty-seven, the resolution to establish tuition rates for out of district students. Resolve that the following rates be established for twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two school year for out of district students. K to six, fourteen, thirty-nine, seven to twelve, two thousand eight hundred and sixty-six. I move the resolution.
Second. Move by Miss McGurl, seconded by Mr. Hagerty, any discussion?
Went down from what, this year? The key sixty.
The form of the rights and the stage of the state.
It's kind of, kind of needed to wind down instead of.
Any further discussion? All favor.
Forty-eight, resolution to establish petty cash fund. Resolve that the Rome City School District is authorized to establish petty cash fund not to exceed a hundred dollars for the purpose of paying properly itemized bills for material supplies or services requiring immediate payment and be it further. Oh, resolve that the deputy treasurer, treasurer shall be custodian of the petty cash fund. I move the resolution.
By Miss McGurl, second amendment for Hagerty, any discussion? All favor.
Forty-nine, resolution to authorize for three B tax shoulder duty companies. Resolve that the Board of Education authorized for following four three B tax shoulder duty companies for the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two school year as listed below.
Second.
Move by Mr. Hagerty, seconded by Mr. Bowie, any discussions? There's been no changes, same. All favor, aye.
Fifty, resolution to accept the cooperative bidding agreement between the Rome City School District and the Madison O'Nida Bosse's for the purchase, supplies and improvements on a collective scale. Resolve their pound recommendations from the school pursuant section. One night, the issue of the general municipal law of the state of New York, cooperative bidding agreement for bidding and purchasing supplies on a collective scale between Rome City School District and Madison O'Nida Bosse's for the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two school year. Discovered by the Board of Education and Dave Drive Director of Business and Finance to be approved to represent the district in, in all matters related to cooperative bidding. I need the resolution.
Move by Mr. Hagerty, seconded by Miss Davis, any discussion?
What is collective scale? Well, isn't that the whole point of Bosse's on a collective scale is if we need pens and they need pens? You know, if all of us in our consortium need them, you're ordering collectively for the consortium, not our district, right? Like, that's why we do it, right? Okay.
Resolution to authorize.
Any, any further discussion? All favor.
Resolution fifty-one, resolution to authorize district credit card. Resolve their pound recommendations superintendent of schools, the Rome City School District was authorized to maintain a credit card not to exceed five thousand dollars in the name of the Rome City School District. I move the resolution.
Move by Mr. Hagerty, seconded by Mr. Bowie, any discussion? All favor.
Resolution to authorize district credit card for few purchases. Resolve their pound recommendations superintendent of schools, Rome City School District was authorized to maintain a credit card for the few for few purchased not to exceed twenty thousand dollars per month in the name of the Rome City School District, I move the resolution.
Second.
Move by Mr. Hagerty, second amendment for Bowie, any discussion? All favor.
Three, resolution to set instructional substitute rate. Resolve that the following rate be established for the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two school year for instructional substitute certified. One sixteen ninety a day, uncertified one only twenty-four. Retired Rome City School District teachers, one point six before I move the resolution.
Move by Mr. Hagerty, seconded by Mr. Bowie, any discussion? All favor.
Resolution fifty-four, resolution to set school nurse substitute rates. Resolve the following rates be established for the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two school year for school nurses, registered school nurses. One hundred and fifteen dollars, eighty cents per day, retired Rome City School District. Point fifty-six per day, I would do a.
Move by Mr. Hagerty, seconded by Mr. Bowie, any discussion? All favor.
Fifty-five, resolution to set non-instructional substitute rates. Resolve that the following hourly rates be established for the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two school year for non-instructional substitutes. Say is listed below. Is listed below, I move the resolution.
Second. Move by Mr. Bowie, seconded by Mr. Hagerty, any discussion?
I know I ask this every time, but I forget, does this automatically change if the minimum wage change is on January first? I feel like we're on a tier change for the next.
To, well, this is October first. Agenda, and if it does change the minimum wage, it will automatically change, we would do another resolution.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh, fifty-six.
All favor. What can carry?
Fifty-six, resolution to set athletic site supervisor rates. Resolve that the following rates be established for the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two school year for athletic site supervisors as listed below, I move the resolution.
Second. Move by Miss Bowie, seconded by Mr. Hagerty, any discussion? All favor. What can carry?
Number fifty-seven, resolution to appoint hearing officers for the Committee on Special Education and Committee on Preschool Special Education. Whereas section two hundred point two of the regulations of Commissioner of Education requires that each Board of Education establish administrative procedures for the selection and board appointment of an impartial hearing officer. And whereas appointment from the impartial hearing list, hearing officer list must be made in accordance with the rotational selection process established in paragraph one of subdivision three of section two hundred point two of this part. Now therefore be it resolved that the Rome City School District leaves the district specific list as maintained by the State Education Department's impartial hearing reporting system for the appointment of impartial hearing officers for the Committee on Special Education and Committee at Preschool Special Education, where a request is made for impartial here. I move to resolution.
Second. Move by, um, Mr. Bowie, seconded by Dr. Fontana, any discussion? All favor.
Uh, item fifty-eight, resolution authorizing the Board of Education President, Vice President and Clerk to appoint impartial hearing officers for special education hearings. Whereas part two hundred of the regulations of the Commissioner of Education was amended to require that upon receipt of a request for an impartial hearing involving a student with us, with or a student suspected of having a disability, a Board of Education immediately appoint an impartial hearing officer pursuant to the procedures set forth in said regulations. And whereas said amendments also authorize a Board of Education to designate one or more of its members to appoint the impartial hearing officer. Now therefore be it resolved that the President, Vice President and Clerk of the Board of Education are hereby authorized to appoint the impartial hearing officer to preside over special education hearings pursuant to the law as stated. I move the resolution.
Second.
Move by Miss Davis, seconded by Mr. Bowie, any discussion?
Thanks, Joe.
Thank you. All favors say aye.
Resolution to appoint District Committee on Special Education for the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two school year as defined by part two hundred point three regulations of the Commissioner of Education and section four four zero two of education law. Resolve that upon the recommendation of school, of the superintendent of schools, the following people be appointed as members of the Committee on Special Education for the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two school year as listed below. I move the resolution.
Move by Miss Davis, seconded by Mr. Bowie, any discussion? All favor, say aye.
Item sixty, resolution to appoint Subcommittee on Special Education at each elementary and secondary school for the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two school year as defined by part two hundred point three regulations of the Commissioner of Education. Resolve that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the following subcommittee members be appointed for the twenty twenty one, twenty two school year. Psychologist, chairperson assigned to building or district chairpersons, child's regular education teacher whenever the student is or may be participating in the regular education environment, child's special education teacher or special education teacher provider, special education therapist as needed, parent or guardian of child, others with knowledge or expertise regarding student and interpreting special implications of evaluation results and student if appropriate. I move the resolution.
Move by Miss Davis, seconded by Miss Bowie, any discussion? All favor, say aye.
Item sixty-one, resolution to appoint District Committee on Preschool Special Education for the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two school year as defined by part two hundred regulations of the Commissioner of Education. Resolve that upon the recommendation of superintendent of schools, the following subcommittee members be appointed for the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two school year as listed below. I move the resolution.
Move by Miss Davis, seconded by Mr. Bowie, any discussion? All favor, say aye.
Item sixty-two, resolution to approve surrogate parent list for the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two school year. Whereas the regulations of the Commissioner or Board of Education, or Commissioner of Education, I apologize, part two hundred, section two hundred point two require that the Board of Education shall establish a list of persons from whom the district shall choose a surrogate parent. And whereas the part two hundred defines a surrogate parent as a person appointed to act in the place of parents or guardians when a student's parents or guardians are not known or when after reasonable efforts, the Board of Education cannot discover the whereabouts of a parent or a student or is a word of a state. Now therefore be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the following person be appointed to the surrogate parent list of the Rome City School District for students with disabilities and surrogate parent list be approved for the twenty twenty one school year. Ian Banks, I move the resolution.
Second. Move by Miss Davis, seconded by Mr. Hagerty, any discussion? All favor, say aye.
Item sixty-three, resolution for special project authorization. Resolve that the Board of Education authorized superintendent or is designated representative to sign and submit all applications for federal funds as well as any other funds which may be available to the school district, I move the resolution.
Second.
Move by Miss Davis, seconded by Miss Bowie, any discussion? All favor, say aye.
Item sixty-four, resolution to establish the dollar limit for superintendent and Board of Education President approval of construction change orders. Resolve that the superintendent of schools and the President of the Board of Education be approved to sign change orders up to ten thousand dollars per change order without prior approval of the Board of Education. I move the resolution.
Move by Miss Davis, seconded by Mr. Bowie, any discussion? All favor, say aye.
Item sixty-five, resolution designating the school district treasurer and president of the board the authorized representatives of the board in matters applying to federal assistance. Resolve that effective July first, twenty twenty one, the school district treasurer is hereby designated as the authorized representative of the Rome City School District Board of Education for the purpose of furnishing to the United States of America information, data and documents pertaining to applications for federal funds as may be necessary in connection with public laws eight seven four, eight one five and eighty-nine dash ten and otherwise to act as the authorized representative of the Rome City School District Board of Education in connection with such application. And be it further resolved that in the absence of the school district treasurer, the President of the Board be and he or she hereby is designated as the authorized representative of the Rome City School District Board of Education for the purpose of furnishing to the United States of America information, data and documents pertaining to application for federal funds as may be necessary in connection with public laws eight seven four, eight one five, eighty-nine dash ten and otherwise act as the authorized representative of the Rome City School District Board of Education in connection with such application. I move the resolution.
Move by Miss Davis, seconded by Mr. Bowie, any discussion? All favor, say aye. Sixty-six, resolution for federal funds compliance regulations. Resolve that in order to continue with federal programs, the Board renews its commitment to comply with federal regulations administered through the State Education Department, so move.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hagerty, any discussion? All favor. Number sixty-seven. Resolution for renewal of participation in national school breakfast, school lunch, special milk program. Resolve that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education authorized a renewal of the district's participation in national school back breakfast, school lunch and special milk programs for twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two school year, so move. Move by Miss Davis, any discussion?
Peter, is this going to continue to be a pre-program?
Yes. Any further discussion? All vote in favor, aye. Resolution sixty-eight. Resolution to approve Rome City School District Medicaid compliance program. Whereas the Rome City School District participates in programs that provide services to Medicaid eligible individuals and receive Medicaid reimbursement for such programs, including the school supportive health services program. And whereas the New York State Office of the Medicaid Inspector General reports Medicaid providers to implement compliance programs aimed at detecting fraud waste and abuse in the Medicaid program. And whereas Rome City School District is committed to compliance with all applicable laws and regulations related to Medicaid billing and reimbursement. And whereas Rome City School District has developed a Medicaid compliance program aimed to prevent inaccurate billing or inappropriate practices in accordance with New York State's Services Law Section three sixty-three D. Now therefore be it resolved as follows, one, the Rome City School District Medicaid compliance program is hereby approved. That Dave Drive, Director of Business and Finance is designated as a Rome City School District Medicaid compliance officer in accordance with the program. Three, the Rome City School District Superintendent and Rome City School District Medicaid Compliance Officer are hereby directed to take steps to implement Rome City School District Medicaid Compliance. are hereby directed to take steps to implement Rome City School District Medicaid compliance program. I move the resolution.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bowie. Any discussion on this resolution? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Here. Resolution sixty-nine, resolution to grant bridge use starting, resolution to grant use of Ridge Mills School, Rome Memorial Hospital. Resolved that upon approval of the Superintendent of Schools, in the event of an internal emergency, Rome Memorial Hospital July one, twenty twenty-one, the June thirty of twenty twenty-two, permission is hereby granted for the hospital to use Ridge Mills and Elmont Dairy School. Attention, refer to me for page. So move the resolution. By Ms. Davis. Any discussion? All vote in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? What can carry? Resolution seventy. Less paid. Resolution to approve that policies. Resolved that the school board acknowledges that all existing policies continue, but amended by the Board of Education. So move.
Second.
Second by Ms. Davis. Any discussion? All vote in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? What can carry? Seventy-one. Resolution designating newspaper for official notices. Resolved that Rome Daily Sentinel and the Unit Observatory Dispatch be designated as newspapers for official district notices of the Rome City School District for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year. So move.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bowie. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? What can carry? Seventy-two. Resolution establishing day and time of regular meetings and providing for special meetings. Regular meetings, the regular meetings of Board of Education shall be held the second and fourth Thursdays unless otherwise indicated. All meetings shall convene at six P M. in District Office unless otherwise indicated. Dates and locations may be changed on occasion by a majority vote of the Board. All members shall be notified of such a change at least twenty-four hours prior to the original date. Special meetings, the President shall call a special meeting of the Board when requested by any member of the Board to do so. President may call special meeting of the Board whenever he or she or Superintendent considers such a meeting necessary. So move.
Second.
Second by Ms. Davis. Any discussion? All vote in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? What can carry? Okay. Any other business? Whatever we are. Oh, yeah. Before we, before we adjourn? Okay. We'll take a moment there for our new members. Okay, we're gonna do it all. Whoops. Okay, turtle. What do you want us to do now?
So just the new members and the officers if they can raise their right hand and
I feel like we've been on this so long. I forgot we could get on.
All my papers here.
We gotta read. I only swear that I support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York. I have a great duty to the office of according to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Sign up. Move the number.
Yes.
I don't very agree with all these.
Sign here.
Thank you. Yep. I'm there. And then your rest.
It just says, uh, I've seen it from, from Molly's show. Or from SBI.
I miss the old KFC.
They don't, they don't meet. Yeah. I'll double check.
We're gonna just send. Thank you.
Okay, so we need a most important. Well, I and Davis. All favor. Aye. Your meeting is now complete.
Thank you. 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 Joe, it's late today. One day.
Not rumors, but coming out.
Sorry, y'all. I know. I know. Just be remembered.
It's still terrific.
Yes, Joe makes the best cheese. A lot.
Twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. Okay, we ready? We're off. We're on the run. Okay. Okay, I'm, I'm calling the regular meeting of the Rome Board of Education for July seventh, twenty twenty-one quarter. We have no department reports. So our next item is to approve the minutes of this regular meeting June twenty-four, twenty twenty.
I move that.
Move by Ms. Davis.
Second.
Move by Mr. Bowie. Any discussion? All favor, say aye.
Aye.
True. Mr. Bowie, do you have any additions or solutions? We do not have any time. Members of the Report of Superintendent of Schools.
Thank you. Just a fourth of things tonight, everybody. Uh, summer programs are off and running. Uh, things are looking good there. Uh, our reports so far for first student are, are good. Our few phone calls we've received are from families just kind of making sure that the first student drivers and such have similar knowledge about their kids' needs, uh, as the Bernie Bush drivers did. So, uh, so far no major mishaps in summer programs. Glad to see that they're all off to a great start. Capital work is happening throughout the district. The RFA project is pumping right along, uh, moving forward those things. The Stroud Water uh, main replacement has been delayed slightly because of paperwork and timing of the Board being able to approve the contractors and they get the paperwork certified. So that will probably happen closer to the beginning of August. We may try and push it off until summer school ends there because we do have our, uh, secondary, uh, support learning program happening at Stroud. In order to do that work, they have to shut off all the water for the building and you can't have students in the building while they're doing that work. So we either need to go remote for a few days or see if we can get those kids to a different building for a few days. Uh, we may see if we can limp along till the end of summer program to make that happen. But other than that, capital work and all the other buildings is underway. Uh, you may or may not see folks moving around this building, uh, throughout the evening. They're working on the light replacements. The boilers were taken out here a couple of weeks ago. Uh, so the boiler work, HVAC work and lighting work happening in pretty much all the buildings throughout the district. On some positive news, uh, related to COVID. Uh, there was information sent out today, uh, trying to clarify what is and is not required for, uh, summer programming for both, uh, students and, and we're also looking into it for offices. So uh, I spoke to Don Bowman about this a little bit earlier today. His office was not really aware of this most recent memo. But the state is saying that schools can treat summer programming the same way that they are allowing summer camps to work, which uh, the reason why that could be positive is that, uh, that memo states that anybody that's completely vaccinated does not need a mask off, whether you're indoors or outdoors, uh, which would apply to our staff in our summer programs. And unvaccinated individuals also are not required to wear a mask, but they are suggested to wear a mask. That would mean that students under the age twelve that are unvaccinated could have the decision to, uh, wear a mask or not wear a mask. Of course, it also says that the district still has the right to make a decision of whether or not masks are mandated or not mandated. Uh, and so there's a little bit of unclearity on what the memo needs, but it does shed a little bit of positive light for summer programs for indoor purposes, outdoors. Nobody needs to wear a mask still. The one big problem is that the, uh, information today clearly states that this does not apply to the fall of twenty twenty-one and that no decisions or information is available for fall twenty twenty-one. Uh, they expect that sometime in August that we'll get guidance on what twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two will be. But, uh, regardless, still some positive movement in that, um, looking to be a little bit less, uh, restrictive for students, uh, under the age of twelve within schools. Uh, last thing, just want to thank the, uh, board members who were on the board of actu- still currently here. I'll reach out to Paul, uh, Lee and John for the, uh, wonderful gesture, the card here. I'm passing my father. I appreciate that. And, uh, thank you all for your support throughout the uh, past year, two years, if you've been around, two years, it's been a rough two years for me and my, uh, fathers and father-in-laws, but, uh, here we are. Moving forward, I just thank you all for your continued support. With that, I turn back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Blake. At this point, the meaning is to go for a public comment. If you wish to speak, and I'm not already done, so please complete a comment carriage with Mrs. Brenner. This is an opportunity to appear before the school board and express your views concerning agenda items and district affairs. We ask that you limit your remarks to five minutes. All public speakers are asked to retain from making personal texts for district employees and elected officials. Be advised that your comments do not enjoy the same privilege and immunity as statements made by members of Rome Board of Education. And that a mandatory or obscene statement are prohibited. Please note that unless specifically indicated on each agenda, this time is not a question and answer period. There's no exchange of conversation with the members of the Board or executive staff. However, if your comments require response, every effort will be made to respond to your inquiries at a reasonable time. Thank you for your cooperation. So I have one card here from, from Jeff Nelson.
Surprise. Um, I was, I'm not sure how tonight wet was supposed to go that way or if things were made because of the incident that occurred outside the Franklin Restaurant. So I had prepared something to say that was in regards to what happened there. Um, we were concerned, um, I'm speaking on behalf of the NAACP and its executive board. We were concerned that the leadership of the school, school board was going to take a turn at which, um, the NAACP would, would not be accepted as part of the community. Um, we've come a long way with working with the school district. Um, we have formed many partnerships with the school district and we want to ensure with the new leadership that this continues on that it's not sidebar because maybe, um, some of you um, may have different views on how things should be going in regards to equity, diversity and, um, all the things that we had concerns with. So with, um, that being said, uh, Mr. Nash, we hope that you will work with us. Um, just as Mr. Blake does and Mr. Brewer does and the new board members, we hope that you will embrace us as well because, um, we just wanted to ensure that what's written on that wall goes for all the children in the school district. So I'm not going to get on soapbox about anything that happened. I do think though that we should remember what happened, the incident that happened. And I'm hoping, Ms. Davis, I appreciate your apology. Um, and I'm sure, um, Coach Glander does as well. I hope that it doesn't happen again. Um, because that is, that's a distraction that the school district doesn't need. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nelson. One more speaker at least.
Okay, Tricia Rakowski. Ron and Senator. I just wanted to also make a note about the Franklin incident. I was walking out of the restaurant with my husband and my mother-in-law that night. And I've known Tanya for a few years. But I also saw what happened that day and it was very, very, I couldn't sleep the whole night before. Uh, excuse me, the night after. Because it was just very upsetting to me, having had three children go through this probe to the school district and play sports. I've had two kids that excelled very well in hockey and I saw Mr. Glander through years go to hockey rinks and pull kids of all shapes and sizes and, you know, demographics and pull them out and say, hey, come and play lacrosse. Come and try something new. I'll give you hats, I'll give you a stick. And there's a lot of passion that goes behind these coaches far beyond the this stipend that the school district gives them. And to see the way you charged at him, to see the way that that man could not even cross the street and to know that you are the vice president of the school board makes me ill. So that's just my statement. I know you're here, I know you're an elected official. I am not here in any way, shape or form to make any derogatory comments towards you. But I think it's only fair to know. Everybody should know exactly what happened that day. And this poor man couldn't even cross the road. My husband is a former law enforcement officer and he was standing back, he thought you were going to strike him. And for all the comments that you were making over the past year regarding COVID, regarding masks, regarding safety, you were all but spitting in his face. You were all within the three foot zone, personal space of Mr. Landra and it was very, very upsetting to watch. My mother-in-law is here from Florida and she got to witness a board member attacking a faculty member of our district. It was embarrassing.
That's. Thank you, Tricia, appreciate your comments. Is there anybody else that would like to speak? Okay, public comment portion is closed. Now, I have a court study session. We have our agenda, the third on page two, go to.
Peter, for the summer program, um, some parents don't know that their their kids are in it. There's a letter sent out like in the past two or three days.
It would have been before then too.
There were phone calls.
For both of them, so they know where they're going and okay, cause I.
There was, if if someone comes across that doesn't have the information to have in contact.
Alright.
Resolution to accept the agenda. That time recommendation of superintendent of schools, the content agenda be accepted by the board of education. Second amendment, Malatch.
Okay, of course.
Any discussion? All favor, the content agenda.
Aye.
And Carrie, finance. On page five. Item number one is, I'm still, I guess, the former chairman of the committee, I will read next. I miss. Resolution to enter into contract with Madison Night of Both. Whereas the board of education of Rome City School District desires to enter into a five-year contract with the Madison Night of Bothies in order for the Mohawk Regional Information Center to provide the certain services to the district pursuant to education law nineteen fifty four JJ. Now, sir, those services being broadband telecommunication is defined on the tax sheets. Now, therefore, it resolves that the board of education of Rome City School District agrees to enter into a contract with the Madison Night of Bothies through provision of said services to the district not exceeding seven hundred and fifty dollars monthly. Rome Free Academy, RFA Stadium, Bellamy, Andrewsburg, Staley Junior High School, Klaas, John Joy, Denty, Ridge Mills and Soaks, plus any one-time vendor installation costs, subject to the approval of the Commissioner of Education for a period of five years, beginning on or about May 1st, twenty twenty one, ending on or about May 31st, twenty twenty six. Of all.
Second amendment, Mr. Malatch, any discussion on this items? This is basically like your time Warner bill, respect and bill.
And so we get it through the consortium.
Correct. They take medicine that goes, causes all of our.
Alright, I thought so.
All of our, tonight.
Any further discussion?
I'm sorry, I have one last question. Yeah, so this is five years. If there's a lot of changes in technology happening, if something happens that we had an opportunity for our buildings to do fiber or some other.
This is just for the service, so just for paying your cable bill.
So basically, if there was.
Upgrades to the fiber or to the switches or to the access points, that's all.
So it would be up to BOSI's if there was a better service.
No, that would be up dots. That's what we, that's what we contract with them at close before. So they're the ones that are looking and reviewing making sure we've got enough fiber coming into the buildings, making sure that we've got enough bandwidth, making sure we've got enough, uh, space in our closets, our switches are the best switches, we can have enough access points or access points are all.
So it's not like our house where like this is not working and I'm stuck with them, like this is reviewed. I guess that's my question. I feel like there's some changes coming.
As far as the service goes, no, the services provided contract, unless something changes with the vendor that's providing the service through BOSI's, that's a different story. But as far as equipment goes.
No, I'm not asking about equipment.
Okay.
So I'm, I'm like, basically there's, this is a, a difficult thing because there's only basically one game in town, right? So if over the next three to five, you know, we're in this for five years. Let's say in three years, there's an opportunity and there's another type of internet carrier that could help to support what we're doing. Clearly, the question has come in, we are now one to one, even though we distributed Chromebooks to our students for the purpose of the crisis that we were in, but we heard our students express that they want to continue to have that ability. So if we were able to have something available that worked better in our buildings, I wouldn't want to say we're locked in for five years and.
Well, there's, and every contract, as you know, there's out clauses and the same thing, BOSI's can find a different provider and then notify us that they're no longer going to use the same power that we contracted for.
Okay. So we're agreeing to whatever the consortium follows up.
Um, if they change, we would probably have the opportunity to get out, of course.
Okay. Alright.
Um, you mentioned something that my part is for listening, but I may pause. Is that a kind of we have with them now that we're getting more than anything with them?
Correct, yes, we have agreed with them.
So it hasn't expired yet, we want to be.
And you. Next year's report.
Okay. Any further discussion?
I have a question. Stroud isn't in this list of facilities, there's a lot of fraud being on there. Do you see that or they cover?
Something about Stroud, I remember five years ago and I can't, I'd have to get back. We questioned this five years ago.
Isn't Stroud on a separate contract because of the building project?
I think the timeframe, yeah.
Their cycle difference.
Same provider, but their years fall in the middle of this. That's right.
Point of reference, Staley's no longer junior high school.
That's how it's still listed, SD.
Because that's where it was when it was, when it set up, okay.
We, we've talked to SED several times to remind them and this is just how they're listed, so.
Three changes later.
We have to go with that way of doing this, okay.
Yep.
I, I figured it was the reason why, it's just, it's.
Any further discussion? All favor the resolution.
Aye.
Opposed? What we care.
We haven't talked about opposition and findings. That's what I was, my question, which is, is appropriate time.
Yeah, we need to make it, please. We need to connect the meeting, just because we've been here since five o'clock. It doesn't have to be, we didn't do it last year, this, at this time.
We did it at the next meeting.
We can, we.
We're meeting again next week.
We had a lot of discussions, we had, we made decisions.
Right, but I'm saying, we meet again next week, right? That would be the second.
No, the weekend.
We won't be. Tomorrow, we would have, would have.
Twenty seven.
Oh, tomorrow.
I think we're good with, with finance.
Okay, the first was.
Financial operations. Yeah, I think.
So, so we, can you just put on the agenda for next thing here? My agenda, I am the committee.
Yep.
Okay, then that's it for finance, nothing on facilities, nothing on educational programs. These operations.
Action items, item one, resolution to adjust retirement date. And upon, resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the board of education hereby adjusts the following individual's retirement date. Sheila Pelton, teacher assistant at Bellamy from October 8th to October 9th of twenty twenty one. I move the resolution.
Second.
Move by Ms. Davis, second amendment, so Bowie, any discussion on that?
She wasn't sure.
I'm sorry.
All favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Item number two, resolution to accept retirement, resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the board of education hereby accepts with regret the retirement of the following individual, Zachary Snow, school library media specialist at RFA, effective date July thirty first, twenty twenty one. I move the resolution.
Second amendment, Sir Bowie, any discussion?
Thank you. For since many years.
I'm here, you know.
Thank you, Mr. Snow. All favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Resolution to appoint summer school personnel, resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the board of education hereby appoints the following summer school personnel as listed below from July 5th, twenty twenty one through August 13th, twenty twenty one. I move the resolution.
Second amendment, Mr. Bowie, any discussion? All favor, we.
Aye.
Um, favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Item number four, resolution to approve CSEA unit seven seven six three dash zero zero contract for clerical unit, resolved that upon the recommendation of superintendent of schools, the contract between the Rome City School District and the CSEA unit seven seven six three dash zero zero contract for clerical for the period of July 1, twenty twenty to June 3rd, twenty twenty four, be approved and implemented with the following modifications. Three and a half percent raises effective each year for twenty twenty retroactively, twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two and twenty twenty three. I move the resolution.
Second. Second amendment, Mr. Heavily, any discussion on the resolution? All favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed. Nay.
Nay. We got you, we got you. Fortune carries seven to one.
Item number five, resolution to appoint teacher center personnel, resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the board of education hereby appoints the following teacher center personnel. Jessica Lattimore, director, Frederick Hall, lab assistant, Sarah Kessler, program specialist, effective July 1st, twenty twenty one through June 30th, twenty twenty two. I move the resolution.
Second.
Second by Mr. Malatch, any discussion on the resolution? All favor, say aye.
Aye. No.
Did you have a question?
No, I, just because, I, um, from last year, is Jessica still full time, is Sarah still full time featuring? Okay.
Sarah Kessler's as well.
Okay, so. And is, are their salaries funded from the district?
These salaries are funded through the state grant, uh, because the money comes to the district and is dispersed to the district general fund. It, yes, they have to be funded by the board to receive that for all reasons.
It's coming back.
Yeah, this is, we didn't list for the next, for this item and the next item, the amounts. We normally list those. Right, any stipends or salaries?
Not our money, so that's probably why this.
Okay, but the next one, should that one have been?
Uh, it can be, it's a recall, it's not a new hire, so she comes in at wherever she was laid off from, wherever all that was.
Okay, just consistency and clarity, thank you.
Any further discussion? All favor of resolution five, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? What you care?
Item number six, resolution to recall individual from the preferred eligibility list. Resolved upon the recommendation of superintendent of schools, the board of education hereby recalls the following individual from the preferred eligibility list. Carmella Boyer, elementary Staley, effective September 1st, twenty twenty one. I move the resolution.
Second amendment, Mr. Bowie. How, curiosity, one, what she was, what the difference? Twenty nineteen, right? Twenty nineteen, okay.
And do we have many, I know that you mentioned some vacancies in your update us, do we have many others? It's coming in from the list, this is it, okay.
Any further discussion? All favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
And, okay. Um, action item, no, I did, while we don't have that chair. Action item number seven, resolution to appoint instructional personnel. Resolved that upon the recommendation of superintendent of schools, the board of education hereby appoints the following instructional personnel. Brendan Woodward, math teacher at Stroud, at BS thirty step ten, salary of fifty six thousand five hundred, I'm sorry, four hundred and forty, effective September 1st, twenty twenty one to August thirty first, twenty twenty four. Felicity Jones, math teacher at Stroud, uh, BS step four, salary forty six thousand six thirty nine, September 1st, twenty twenty one to August thirty first, twenty twenty five. Breanne Kent at RFA, math teacher, uh, BS step four, forty six thousand six thirty nine, nine one twenty one to eight thirty one, twenty five. Uh, and noting that these are probationary appointments as noted below. I move the resolution.
So, second amendment, Mr. Malatch, discussion?
Can I just ask real quick why the first one is only, uh, three year and the number four?
They've been tenured before, so under the, under the PPR law, we've had previously held tenure year probation periods, one year less than.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? What you care?
Resolution to appoint instructional personnel, long-term substitute. That upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the board of education hereby appoints the following instructional personnel. Athena Hoffman, at Stroud, math teacher, BS thirty step eight plus, um, uh, eight plus MS, fifty two thousand nine hundred and forty, effective nine one twenty one to six thirty, twenty twenty two. I move the resolution.
Second amendment, Sir Bowie, any discussion?
We hiring a lot of math teachers. The reason, did we?
Uh, we had some vacancies and some retirements in math. We had a couple of resignations, a couple of vacancies, just happened to be something that they were able to hop on early because the retirements were known about and the resignations were known about, so they were kind of personally, we get out into the atmosphere for accepting applications.
And is this following any pics? But were there any transfer, okay, so these weren't necessarily where they were vacated.
It was transferred from Stroud to RFA.
Okay, so can you explain why we were hired if we're, if in the last resolution, we hired three math teachers, why we're also appointing long-term sub?
Uh, we have a maternity leave at Stroud.
Okay.
Going for.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? All favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? What you care?
Resolution to create positions that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the board of education hereby approves the following position creations. Five school social workers district wide. I move the resolution.
Second.
Second amendment, Mr. Bowie, any discussion? This is part of the, sir.
Yes, this is part of the.
Any further discussion?
I just have one other question. What, what do we do, should we determine, are these, since there's five, how many do we already have in the district?
We have one, our Stroud social worker resigned recently.
So we have five plus one?
If you approve this, yes.
Okay, and do they only serve the elementaries?
Uh, they would be district-wide and the intent would be to service the elementaries as much as they need. Uh, but if needed to move to a middle school or a high school, we have that flexibility.
And at what point would we address if five positions are sufficient?
Uh, probably once we get five people hired, uh, we'd be able to see what the need are, look at that information and determine what we need for.
Okay.
Any further discussion? All favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? What you care?
Item ten, resolution to create positions, resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the board of education hereby approves the following position creations. Eight elementary reading positions. I move the resolution.
Second.
Second amendment, Mr. Bowie, any discussion?
Yes, I, I just like to say, I'm, I'm going to be voting no on this and I know it's just, it's just sort of like a protest, folks. Um, it's, it's not that I'm against hiring teachers, it's, I really think we need to have an in-depth look at our RTI AIS plan. Um, and to do that, I, I'm not sure that we're really putting our positions where we might need them or not need them, or even to judge if they're going to be effective ones there, they are. It's not against hiring teachers that we might need them, which is, I think we need to have a little bit more discussion and some, get some data, um, to see how effective our program is. Especially since we moved, um, tier two instruction from the AIS teachers back to the general education classroom teachers. So I just simply need to have some discussion on that. That's why it's not against hiring the teachers, it's just.
So it sounds like we might need an education for this.
That will be discussed, um, at next time I got my. Why would you discuss?
I would say that my other question on this is, we laid off several AIS teachers. Now we're bringing in AIS teachers and I know one of the concerns about the funding we have available is longevity and our ability to sustain positions. So I have concerns, not about, as Karen said, the individuals, but eight, eight seems like a lot. I under, and I'm very conflicted between the need that we have created by what we experienced during COVID and our ability to sustain and retain the best individuals based on what our budget allows. So I don't, I don't know that I can support eight.
The budgeting was all part of the, the ESSER plan, all detail of how we can sustain it for five years and then beyond five years, how we make that happen.
Okay, so we, you feel that at least five years?
Absolutely, yeah. It's all part of the funding. And eight is based on the current, uh, the current level of need from the most recent data that we had available at the time. Look and say, well, how many would be enough that we think you can find eight certified people? Uh, I don't know that we can find eight certified people, but we figured any more than they would definitely not happen. Any less than that could possibly not, not be enough to fill the needs that we think we have.
What else might happen is you might have our general education teacher. What else might happen is you might have our general education teachers who might move into these positions, so we might also, that might also create openings in the general education class.
It could, they have to have the reading certificate though, which not many do have. The bigger issue would be the math support, because that's a general certificate. But you are correct, it could cause literally contractor, the teachers of domino effect of empty classrooms.
And this is just one of those decisions, difficult decisions that we make, that there's arguments on both sides of this and do all these reading teachers get their own classroom?
No.
So they just go visit?
I think that's another reason for, if I'm correct, going for a tech, an AIS position rather than a classroom teacher because we, I, I think you could probably justify having a classroom teacher stay in a school that's got high class size, we don't have a classroom for them. We can discuss that when it's meeting.
Correct, there's no physical space for additional classes.
Any further discussion then? All those in favor of revolution number ten, you say aye. Alls. Five to three. What can carry?
Item number eleven, resolution to create positions, resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the board of, sorry, education hereby approves the following position creations, six elementary positions for AIS math. I move the resolution.
Second amendment, Mr. Boy, discussion?
Same discussion holds.
Any further discussion? All favor, say aye. Opposed? Five, same five. What can carry? Thank you, Ms. Davis. I'll say we have nothing. And, is there any miscellaneous business? What would you? Second. Davis, favor.